Before we officially start the meeting, tonight we're going to have an invocation, and we're going to have the pledge of allegiance. And on the invocation, it's going to be given by Pastor Knox Bullard from the church upon, Bible Church. And if you want to participate in the invocation, you can. If you don't want to participate, you don't have to. And whatever business you came here to discuss tonight will have no bearing on whether you participate or you don't. We're also going to have the pledge, and Connie's going to lead us. So if it's all right, we'll have everybody stand, and we'll do the pledge first, and then we'll have our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the Lord, and we have to say this to America, and to the people who live in those places, on a vision under our God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice for all.
Shall we pray? Everybody please stand.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for Connersville and the 200 years you've given to us as a community. Thank you for Mayor Urban and our city council. They have decisions to make to better our community. Sometimes they have tough problems to face. We're asking that you would help them and give them wisdom so that the decisions they make will help our city to go forward. Thank you for your care for all of us. We ask this in the strong name of Jesus our Savior. Amen.
Thank you. Our first order of business tonight will be the roll call.
Councilwoman Rich?
Present.
Councilman Weber?
Present.
Councilman Scholm?
Present.
Councilman Nobby?
Present.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Present.
Councilman Preach?
Present.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Present.
Oh, we're present. We have a quorum. We can do business. But I ask that everybody turn their cell phones on by rate, or turn them off. If you have, I think I turned mine on.
I'm going to double check too.
I'm going to double check here. The first order of business, and then it will be the reading of the minutes of the last regular council meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion we pass the minutes as presented.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to pass the minutes as they were sent out to the council members. Are there any additions or corrections? None appearing? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Second order of business tonight, we have some guests. We have some guests. We have lots of guests. We have some special guests. John Connor, where's your horse?
Let him outside.
Okay.
Well, Mayor, this is John Connor. He came back to visit us today on 200th birthday of the city.
How many know that today is the 200th birthday of the city of Connersville? Two hundred years ago today, they took the plot to Brookville and recorded, because Brookville was already a town, and Connersville became a village, really, 200 years ago today. And John Connor came back here today. You have a speech, don't you, John?
I do. Would you want me to read it again?
If you could read it fast and short?
I could read at least the end of it.
Give it the people need to know about John Connor.
All right. Well, I was born in Ohio in 1775, grew up around many different Indian tribes in the area, so I learned a lot of different Indian dialects, which served me really well later in life. I often served as an interpreter for the different tribes and between the United States, usually when treaties had to go out. One of the most important treaties, for Connersville anyway, was the Twelve Mile Treaty, or the Treaty of Fort Wayne, which added 3 million acres of land to the United States and Connersville. And, you know, the area that would become Deacon County was part of that. So technically, when I first came here in 1808 to start my fur trading business, Connersville, the area wasn't even part of the United States. Soon after the treaty was signed, the land was now open to white settlers, so people came flooding in looking to stake their claim. Well, soon, not too long after that, we had a sawmill, a grist mill, a distillery, a library that I founded, and a couple stores, and even a hotel. And this was just five years after I set up my trading post. And if I do say so myself, that was quite the accomplishment. Although I must say, over 200 years, Connersville has grown greatly from what it was in my day. My day, it was mostly woods, and if you saw a bear running around, well, it was just another day. So, Connersville, 200 years is a long time, but as I told everyone at the meeting earlier, it's an even longer history. And it's not just a history of a place. It's a history filled with hope and love, tragedy, despair, courage against overwhelming odds. But most of all, it's a history of its people. And again, as I said earlier, as we came together to celebrate Connersville's bicentennial today and during the bicentennial later, I encourage everyone to not just look at the past, but also to look towards our future, because that is where our future lies. And while things may seem bleak now, well, we faced tougher odds, and we've come back from them. So as I said before, let us carry on so that future generations may look back on us with fond memories.
John, I understand. How many dialects of Indian do you speak?
Twenty-two, as well as French.
Yeah.
Yes. My mother was French, so I learned from her. Speak and drive.
When you first came up from Blooming Grove, is that where you came from?
Cedar Grove, Indiana. I started my first trading post there.
Okay. How old were you when you first came?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three years old.
From Cedar Grove to here.
Yeah. That was quite an accomplishment for a young man. Any questions of John Connor tonight at all? Okay. We have a, just stay put. We have another treat for you. Stan?
Oh, dear.
Stan's written a song about Connersville, and he's going to blast it out tonight over the TV.
Where you want me, Leonard?
Right here in front of the podium.
Oh, okay.
Face the nation.
You'll get my good side.
He wrote this song. He wrote this song for the Connersville bicentennial, and it's quite a song. He's going to do it a cappella. Now, us folks that are from Kentucky, that means singing without music. Go ahead and do it.
Okay. Well, I wrote this song because I wanted to do something for the town, because as you recall, two years ago, this community did something very special for me and our family. And I wanted some small way to pay them back. And it's people like you that did it. Because Connersville, if there's a need in Connersville, people respond. That's the heart of this community. We care. You're all here because you care about where you live. And we all care about one another. And that's what Connersville is all about. It's what a small town's all about. And I want, you know, people look at us and think, well, things aren't so good. But they are, because we've got people like you that care. That's what community's about, people that care. And that's Connersville. So I wrote this song. I tell people, when you're a mailman, you've got nothing else to do but walk around and think of songs. And I told people at the library, if you live on my mail route, and I misdelivered your mail, Nancy, sometime in the last two weeks, probably because I was trying to remember the words to the song. Yeah. But the Tom T. Hall song I sang at the library was very complicated, but this one is pretty easy.
You want me to play?
Well, I told Leonard, I said, I'm going to sing this a cappella, so you can back me up on the air guitar, and he wouldn't do it. You got it. You got it. Okay. I'm not really stalling. I just wanted to express how I really feel. This song is an expression of my gratitude to everybody that was, were so generous to us two years ago, and we haven't forgotten, never will. John Connor came to our fair state 200 years ago. He already told you that. And the canal played a big part in helping our town grow. Little Detroit gave us a name that all users would know. Now is the time that local pride should show, because we're Connersville. We're 200 years strong. We stick together through the right and wrong. From Glass House to Spartan Bowl, this is right where we belong. We're Connersville. We're 200 years strong. So look around. So look around this town of ours, and I know you'll agree. We have a lot to be proud of in our community. Some people say we're down and out, but let's prove them all wrong, because we're Connersville. We're 200 years strong. We're Connersville. We're 200 years strong. We stick together through the right and wrong. From Feth Street Bridge to Roberts Park, this is right where we belong. We're Connersville. We're 200 years strong. We're Connersville. We're 200 years strong. We're still strong.
Are we going to do the party? Are you going to wait? Who's in charge? Who's in charge of the party?
We did bring birthday cake, but we were not sure if you wanted to bring it into the room, so we left it.
Okay, well, what I think we'll do, if it's okay with you, right at the end of the meeting, we'll, when we go off the air, we'll go ahead and cut the cake and give each one of the council people a piece of cake. And I think we better sing now, because we probably lose it. What usually happens is our crowd leaves, so we better sing Happy Birthday. Stan? You're going to have to lead Happy Birthday, because I can't lead.
You don't remember the words?
How's it start?
Happy. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Connersville. Happy birthday to you.
If you'd just bring the cake in and set it right over there, so we can enjoy looking at it through the evening. Okay? And then, I want to, I got it. I got it right here. I'm not near as dumb as I look. Tonight, the city council is going to receive a passport. It will look like this. I received the first one today, and it's got little places in here, and each time you go to a bicentennial activity, they'll put a little stamp on there. And when you get that little book for, you take it to a little guy by the name of Mike Sparks, and he'll give you a hundred bucks.
No, you made that up on your own.
It's $200.
Fifty.
Tell them who you are.
I'm Barb Quante. They've heard me before.
And what are you in charge of?
Thank you.
Marketing and whatever Mike tells me to do.
Thank you.
And you?
I got mine.
Now, one thing about this, you'll notice that there's a place for everyday celebration, and then there's a spot there that has our logo on it, and it does not have anything stamped there. At the end of the celebration, to get it validated that you've been to all the events, you'll get a stamp at the headquarters for that. And then we'll have a spot in Roberts Park to provide this, and all of you that are here, that I'm not passing one out to, we'll have these at headquarters, and also during the event. So make sure you see where and when you want to be, because we want everybody. This is your party.
Barb, thank you so much. We have a head of the library here along with John. Would you like to speak?
I just want to say that I'm a relatively newcomer. I started at the library on January 7th, and I have been very warmly welcomed by the community, and I think it's a wonderful community and happy birthday.
Did you want to speak, ma'am? Judge, would you like to speak?
Not really. We had a nice crowd go the night.
Did you know how many you had at the library?
Eighty-two fifty.
Hey, that's wonderful. That's wonderful. Mike, would you like to stand up and be honored if you will tonight? Just stand where you are. This is Mike Sparks. He's the chairman of the bicentennial committee. And I don't see Donna from the HCI. She probably caked out.
I think somebody mentioned eyes. She went home.
Oh, there, is it raining out there?
It is raining.
Yeah. But we appreciate every one of you that's done so much today. This has been a great day for the bicentennial. We'll either eat one or take one home when we finish our meeting. Is that okay? Thank you all for coming, and thank you for all that you do, and we'll be in touch. Okay. And John, you be careful on the horse.
I'll listen.
Any of you have any questions for John Connor, any of them? We have pending ordinance 2999, salary amendment in the park. We also have pending ordinance 3000, which is a salary amendment DOT. And how those came about is when we redid the contract, we offered to the employees of the park and the street department, if they would obtain a CDL Class A driver's license, they could receive, I believe, am I saying it right, 25 cents on the hour?
Yeah, for Class B and 40 cents for Class A.
And in order to honor that, we have to make the salary ordinance changes, because we've got some that have got Class A, Class B salary ordinances. The new street superintendent told me, you've got to have people over there with a CDL license, or they're not any good to you, because we pull that leaf truck, that requires a Class A. We drive a stop law truck, requires a Class B. So that's why we did it. So that's why we need to pass those tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Due to that, this is a contractual. Can we take those two together?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion we pass ordinance 6059 and 6060.
2999 and 3000.
Pending ordinance, yeah.
Okay. Is there a second? I got a second for everybody. Okay, any discussion? Everybody understand what we're trying to do here? This was a negotiated item in the union contract with the street department. You all approve the contract, so we have to fulfill our obligation by.
Excuse me, we might mention what the amount is, $15.55 an hour after 120 days.
Anybody else have anything? I think we'll just stand. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Would you like to suspend the rules?
Some would.
Thank you.
Okay, on suspension of rules only, all in favor suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You can move forward on third and final reading if you'd like.
Some would.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor to consider pending ordinance 2999, 3000, salary amendments both in the park and DOT. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, and you've done it. We have a like ordinance, pending ordinance 3001. This is a transfer in the park from repair buildings to other equipment, $1,570. Let's see about the second one. Do we take it, too?
No, it's an addition.
Better not, okay. Okay. Pending ordinance 3001 is a transfer in the park, $1,570. We'll have to take it separate.
Do you know what the other equipment is?
One thing, though, is a computer. The secretary's computer crashed up there, and they had to get a new computer. And then they also bought some storage cabinets.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Julie?
Yes.
What does that do to the repair buildings fund?
I think they're all right for now, so.
This is the general pair of the budget, Roberts Building.
Mr. Mayor? I move to accept pending ordinance 3001.
It's a second.
Okay. On pending ordinance 3001, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Would you like to suspend the rules?
Some would. Second.
Got a motion on the floor to suspend the rules and consider pending ordinance 3001 on third and final reading. On suspension of rules only, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Would you like to move on?
Some would.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor to consider pending ordinance 300 on third and final reading. Are there any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. We have an ordinance in the EMS. It's 3002, it's an additional appropriation, $2,600 to other equipment, and that was to re, put in the exhaust machine over there, which will be reimbursed by a grant. We'll get our money back, but right now, we got to front it.
This is our match money.
Okay, this is our match money. We won't get this money back. We already agreed to this, but we got to have a public hearing, so I'm going to open this up to the public. Is there anybody out there that'd like to speak on this issue of matching this grant? And I think it was $32,000.
I think so.
And we got to put 26 in it. The government gives us 32 if we put 26. Any discussion at all? Anybody? Any discussion? None appearing. We'll close the public hearing and open it up to the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to accept pending ordinance 3002.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass pending ordinance 3002. It's an additional appropriation, $2,600 for match money for the exhaust system at the first aid unit. Any discussion up here? None appearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Would you like to suspend the rules and move on to third and final?
Some would.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor to suspend the rules in order this council to move on to third and final reading. On suspension of rules only, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We can move on if you'd like.
Some would. Second.
Got a motion on the floor to consider pending ordinance 3002, an additional appropriation to match, for match money for the exhaust system at the first aid unit. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Right in me, we have pending ordinance 3003. It's also an additional appropriation from the railroad fund of $2,000 for the storm rally, a donation. We'll open this up to a public hearing. Anybody out there have any discussion about giving $2,000 to the storm rally for the school? It's $2,000. We did this last year, and if there, anybody needs to know about the storm rally, I got somebody up here that we can talk about. Anybody got any? Anybody at all in this public hearing? Going once, twice, three times? None appearing. We'll close the public hearing and give it back to the council.
I'm moving with you, pending ordinance 3003.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to consider pending ordinance 3003 on first reading. I have a second. Any discussion? Any discussion at all? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Would you like to suspend the rules?
Some would. Second.
We have a motion on the floor to suspend the rules on pending ordinance 3003, which will allow school to third and final reading. On suspension of rules only, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? You can move forward if you want.
Some would.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to consider pending ordinance 3003 on final reading. This would put $2,000 from the railroad fund into the storm rally. Any discussion? None appearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Pending ordinance 3004, another additional appropriation. This is $500 other equipment in?
Tax abatement fund.
In the tax abatement fund. Tell me why we have to do that.
Um, the, Diana's office, she needs a new office chair, and she's been having some computer issues, so we actually appropriated a little extra in case she has to do something with her computer.
Okay, and you're taking this out of the general fund?
No, out of the tax abatement.
Tax payment, okay. All right. Everybody understand what it is?
No.
It's, we're putting this money in the budget for the grant writer to fix the computer, and we're going to take it out of the?
Tax abatement.
Tax abatement fund. The money we get back from tax abatement.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
$500.
I'd like to make a motion we pass pending ordinance 3004.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to pass pending ordinance 3004, put $500 in the fund for new, or other equipment. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Would you like to, oh, motion carried, 100%. Would you like to suspend the rules?
Some would.
Got a motion on the floor to suspend the rules. Consider pending ordinance 3004 on third and final reading. On suspension of rules, any, only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You may move forward if you like.
Some would.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor to consider 3004, pending ordinance, putting $500 in other equipment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We have a public forum. Does anybody down there want to speak about anything? Did you come here tonight to speak about anything?
Yeah.
Oh, you want to speak about the trail?
Yep.
It's under old business, if it's okay with you. We got that down here on our agenda, under old business, because we considered that last time. Anybody want to speak about anything else? Anybody want to speak about the bicentennial, or whiskers, or? Nothing? Nothing. Nothing. Okay, sure. Public forum closed. We will then take old business, and the only thing I've got under old business is the trail up the railroad grade up in Beeson's. And who would like to speak first? Just raise your hand if you'd like to speak. Okay. You come to the podium, sir. Give your name and address. Say it loud so the council can hear it, and they can get it on TV. Mike, you better stay in here for this, because you are more. Face us. You're talking now, so just stand at the podium.
My name's Shane Rigor, and I live at 3229 Wayne Avenue, and I don't want the trail going through my backyard to Walmart. You know, I think it'll cause vandalism, thieves, trash, and I don't see nothing good becoming on the trail to Walmart, you know? And that's really what I got to say, you know? I don't really want the trail up there.
How close is it to your house?
It would be probably 75 feet, maybe 100.
From the back of your car?
To my back door, yeah.
Thanks. Thank you for that.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Wait till the council asks you a question.[1684.16]
Is the trailer existing already by your house?
No, no, the people that live up there mow and maintain that land that's already there, you know?
I know a good portion of it's still intact, so...
Right, some of it is, you know?
Is that portion still intact by your house?
No. It's been mowed and maintained by me for seven years.
You mo- you maintain the railroad grade?
Yeah, I mow that weed.
You brush it too?
No. I don't brush it, no.
I mean, can you walk up the trail behind your house?
Oh, no, you can't walk up it, you know? I mean, but I mean, as far as walking out my back door to that, yes.
Do you see anything going on out there? 'Cause I've had, I've had some comments on that.
No, I really don't see nothing going on. I don't see no people passing through there or nothing, 'cause you can't really walk through there, you know?
It's woodsy, Mike.
Brushy and woodsy, right? It's brushy and woodsy.
Yeah, it is, it is, you know?
Sir, i- is your concern that the trail would be adjacent to your property and people would...
Yeah, it would be, you know, I mean, as far as that goes, you know, trash. Walmart's open twenty-four hours a day, so, you know, you go in at Walmart at night and look and see what kinda people's in there, you know? I don't want my stuff getting stolen or vandalized.
Well, thank you for your opinion, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay.
Thanks.
Is there someone that would like to speak next? Yes. Dean?
No, you forgot to turn your...
No, since you got those whiskers, I can't, I can't tell who you are. Oh.
You oughta be in here. Well, food now tastes terrible. Mr. Mayor Julie, ladies and gentlemen of the common council. Uh, I read about this in the paper today, and I thought, well, better come down tonight. I can help this gentleman and others. I talked to some people today, and I downloaded the document called four F Department of Transportation slash Federal Aviation. And it's, concerns airport property. And any trail that goes, we have no control, that's the city, it's up Thirty-second. Once it gets to Thirty-seventh Street, that property becomes airport. It's the end of the runway. We own from the, from the airport property, original airport property, we purchased all the way down to Thirty-seventh Street.
It didn't go quite to Thirty-seventh, you went to my backyard.
Well, it's your backyard, yeah.
Now, don't say you own my backyard.
We might have to incorporate that in the... The document specifically states airport property, which is not needed to accommodate an aeronautical use, can be leased for non-aeronautical use, which is compatible with airport operations. By that it means, if you wanted to come up there and start a business that was compatible, fuel, you wanna sell fuel. Or you wanted to sell something to passengers on airplanes, you could do that. That's compatible with airport business. A trail is not compatible. Number two.
Not even if we charged to walk on the trail?
Sir?
What if we charged to walk on the trail?
Well, you'd have to go through a long lease, sir, and I'll get to that. Airport property, blah, 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 blah. This first paragraph was, shall be aeronautical activities. That terminates the whole thing right there. A trail is not an aeronautical activity. Secondly, that trail will lie, it will cross, an approach of runway three six and a departure of runway one eight. That's a traffic zone, and we try to keep it clean. That's one of the reasons we had, we wanted that so bad, so we can establish a GPS approach to that, which we all, we're in the works of getting that done now. Secondly... Any property described as part of an airport in an agreement with the United States, defined by an airport layoff plan. Now, that cost us almost forty thousand dollars two years ago to get that airport layoff plan done. It would have to be changed. It specifically states what that property can be used for, and it is not a trail. This is considered to be dedicated or obligated for airport purposes. That property is. By the terms of the agreement. In addition, airport sponsors, that's the airport board, have acquired property for the airport purposes with federal financial assistance. They paid for ninety-five percent of it. Ninety-five cents on the dollar was paid by the FAA. We bought a million dollars for about twenty-five thousand. So, that land belongs to this airport board and the city as such. However, the FAA determines what's gonna be done with it. When it's not used for airport property. As long as it's used for airport compatibility, approach, departure, safe zones, that's, that's fine with them, they'll go along with that. We start deviating from that, and we have what is called a grant agreement. Now, grant agreements are about that thick, and it tells them there are all the different things you cannot do. But if you do do, and they don't approve of it, you lose your grant and you have to repay the present grants that you've had, which would be about ten million dollars if they invoked that on us for any reason. We would have to have an environmental study done, the full width of that runway, departure and approach. If I can get John to run it down there a little bit, maybe we can sit a little bit. Yeah, there you go. And, uh, that would have to have an environmental study, conducted by more than likely archaeological people at Ball State University. Then, it would have to be fenced on both sides. Then, we would have to receive money for it. We have to charge a rent, because it's airport property, they pay for it, they don't allow us to give it away. So, this is where we own, we start right about here, and we come all the way down to the back, almost say Thirty-seventh, I'll say the mayor's house, to his backyard down here, and own order to here. So, there's not gonna be any trail crossing our property to Walmart. Now, I will more than happily give this to Mr. Baker, and if he wants to, there's thirty-five more, what, five pages? There's thirty-five pages total. I got five I downloaded. And, uh, if Mr. Baker would like to pursue this, he can, but, uh, it is very well documented. What agreement with the United States are involved? All of our grant agreements. What specifically is being requested for a long-term lease for non-aeronautical purpose? Can't be done. What facts and circumstances justify this request? What requirements of the state or local law should be provided? What property or facilities are involved? How was the property acquired or obtained by the airport sponsors? Oh, whole two pages of stuff like that. They just absolutely don't want it to happen. And then, we get into the problem of liability. Like this other gentleman spoke before I did, trash. Uh, you, you drive into the Walmart parking lot, and you find carts set in every place out in the parking lot. People won't even put them to the parking places for the carts. They leave them out in the parking lot. Can you imagine what would happen on a trail across there at all hours of the night? There would be beer bottles, there'd be tin cans, there would be garbage and trash you can't believe. Let some little flying jet, the wind pick that up, and some little flying jet inhale that, we're liable. If somebody takes off from that airport, and there's ten or fifteen people out there on that trail, and he loses power, the thing you do in an airplane, when you lose power and take off, you go straight ahead. That's your best route for survival. That's what he's gonna do. You have ten or fifteen fatalities, or two, or one, or injuries, who's gonna be liable? We're not. We can't be. So, the whole thing is a non-event.
Gene, I got a question.
Sir?
I'm not familiar with this. And I need you to help me out. On this, on the proposed trail, which were the old railroad, okay, used to be, right? Okay, that's, that's proposed, yeah. Now, i- if the trail was to go down the railroad track and you hang a left, and it, it cut across the airport property, um, would that be real close to the IAS sliding? Is that what you're, is this, I mean, I'm gonna, is this against the law, or is there a concern?
No.
I, I'm, I'm, that's what I'm asking, Gene, I'm not sure where we're at.
I would, I would imagine if you spent a ton of money and obligated Mr. Baker, uh, I, I don't know how much attorney fees would be involved, I don't know what it would take to get it, but when the smoke and dust, uh, we're gonna charge you for it. Somebody's gonna have to pay the airport for using that on a monthly basis.
Well, I, my, what I'm asking, Gene, I'm not trying to be, I'm just asking. You know, is your concern, the airport board's concern, or is the FAA, is that that walking trail would be too close to the approach, or is it close to the instrument service?
Directly under the approach.
I, I mean, give me, how, how, how many yards are you from the IAS instrumentation that's standing here with a, with a guidance line?
I can't give it to you, I can tell you...
Roughly, Gene?
The clear zone originates from that end of the runway, you see right up there?
Yes, sir.
There's a clear zone, like, and it comes out in a funnel, and it goes by Part Seventy-seven, comes out like this.
Okay.
And what you do, you imagine another runway surface, a hundred and fifty feet above that one. Then, depending upon the type of approach you have, it goes out, it climbs like this, like a twenty to one, and then a fifth, a fifty to one, and then a hundred to one, until you get up to twelve, or I think it's seven thousand feet, if I remember correctly, I don't remember that. But it's several thousand feet to get into airspace, which is then controlled by the FAA, and it controls airspace.
Well, and, you know, I'm saying, I'm just asking, 'cause I don't understand. It's the airport's, board's issue that it is too close to the end of the runway, is that what you're saying?
It doesn't matter if it was, it doesn't matter in our eyes, and the FAA...
I don't know what you mean.
Whether it's here, whether it's here, or whether it's here, it's crossing a clear zone.
Okay.
It's like, like it had a streak that ran from, or an area that ran from here to that wall, and said, nobody crosses that wall. That's exactly what it means. It doesn't matter how, how wide or long it is, if you can't cross, you can't cross it.
Well, that's what I was asking you, I didn't know, I mean, if, if it's, if it's against the law, it's against the law, that's what I'm asking.
No, I'm not saying it's against the law, I'm saying it's prohibited by regulation.
Okay.
It's not compatible with airport use. That's what they spend ninety-five dollars per hun- per hundred on, so we can buy land. We buy that land with one thing in mind, to protect the airport.
Right.
So, we don't get landlocked, so we don't have people building all around us, so we can't expand in the future. We're not gonna do anything, now we don't have any money, nothing's going on. But that's not to say in five or ten years, well...
Well, that was my question, Gene, 'cause I know if you go, go in that Walmart facility, I've sat there before, and you look over towards the east, you can see those, those red lights, okay? I mean, I don't know if, I could say, if your concern was, was, uh, that the, the trail would be too close to that, it would be vandalism, or...
We would love, well, we have vandalism anyway. With us, this would be the open house. What we would, what we had discussed, and for the city's benefit and ours, everybody concerned with perhaps a bicycle trail in the future. Now, we don't have the money to do this now. Bicycle trail, up through here. This is the old man in the railroad. We own part of that, we don't know how much we own, because it's a railroad. And, uh, back in the days when that railroad was put in, if you research back that far, you'll find out that they gave those farmers X amount of property to let us build that railroad through there. Well, all those papers are long since gone, so nobody knows for sure, and we, we've researched that, where that is. So, what we consider, we know that we could say this is ours alone here. Nobody's ever contested that. But we don't go east of that railroad. But that would be an ideal bicycle trail up to Newman Road, we thought. However, you get into the environmental studies again, and it would have to be fenced. It would have to have an FAA-approved eight-foot fence with cotton or keno wire on top of it, before it could ever do that. And that costs a ton of money. Matter of fact, to perjure the airport costing the neighborhood of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do it the way the FAA requires us to do it. And they, the only money we would have for that would be the NPE money.
Well, that's the reason, that's 'cause I, I don't know this, and that's why I'm asking, Gene, I don't, I don't...
Yeah, it's a very complex, Julie understands, and Julie, it's enough to make you want to stream.
Well, and I don't think it's, and I don't think Gene wants to give, it's not that Gene doesn't wanna do it, it's not that the airport board doesn't wanna do it. They're just kinda prohibited, because we have accepted money all these years from the FAA to make all these improvements to the airport. We would be jeopardizing that, to go against those regulations that they have.
Anytime you take money from Big Brother, there's a blood chip.
Sure.
There's something, you don't just get it and walk off.
You said if we did this, we would have to pay back grant money, didn't you?
If, if they determined that we falsified any part of a grant request, and that could be any number of things, I'll bring that down sometime, let's look at that thing. And if you read it, it's really, Julie will verify this, if you read that grant request, a lot of times you think, wow, I don't know if it's worth it or not, because they can like anything, they can pin you on anything if they want to. But we've always dotted the i's, crossed the t's, saved the money, turned in money that we have left, and do our, do the best job we possibly can. So, we're in good stead with them, but, uh, who knows? They might have a rotation and get all new people in there, and, but you just have to be constantly on your guard. You can't let anything slip, because somebody, it's like the IRS, somebody's waiting there with a big stick to drive through your chest. But this isn't, this, I think it's dead in the water.
Gene, that's what I'm asking you, as a member of the airport board, a long time member of the airport board, you don't have any dog in this fight, I know that. But, in your opinion, this would not be a very good thing to do.
I, I think I can honestly say, and I would fill this in Mr. Baker's court if he wanted to pursue it. There's probably a legal way down the road, somehow, some way, that you might be able to get a lease on some land through there, six or eight feet wide, but that's doubtful, but you might be able to do it.
It's possible. Let, let me see the documentation you have there, so I can study it.
That's just five of thirty-five.
I understand. It'd be a sight to the, uh...
Four F G O P FAA ground use.
Yeah, I'll be glad to take a look at it.
Okay, well, thanks, Gene.
Thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
We're still under, we're still under a public, uh, talk, oh, excuse me, we're still under old business here. Does anybody else wanna talk about this issue of the trail up the railroad grade? Okay? If you'll just come up and state your name, so that I can...
I'm Mary Ludlun. I've lived there on, on Wayne Avenue for over fifty years. And, uh, we have maintained the ground, we mow it.
I've lived, I've been there.
I've been there, you know it looks nice.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't want it in my backyard. I don't know how well it is on up the road. I haven't been up there for many years, I have walked the trail. And now I know it's grown up since the railroad has gone out, but...
How long's the railroad been going?
I would say approximately twenty years.
I see, really, yeah.
And, uh, does it belong to the city?
We don't know.
You don't know, do you?
I asked the park superintendent and the street superintendent, and then I talked personally with the surveyor, and the surveyor said he would give him his opinion, who owned it, uh, the railroad grade.
It's because of...
I think the, the, the thing we're talking about here tonight is not the railroad grade, we're talking about crossing from the railroad grade over to Walmart. That's where they would cross this area.
Why does it have to be crossed up at the airport?
I don't know that.
I mean, is that the idea, you're gonna cross up there by the airport?
Well...
If that falls through, are you gonna cross somewhere else, maybe behind your yard, your back door?
I don't know what they're gonna do, this is just discussion.
Well, the airport actually owns all the way to the mayor's back.
To his property? His backyard?
See, originally, Guffins bought that land behind me, and, in fact, I helped the airport board get it, I bid it off that night, so the airport could get it, 'cause we needed that land to be part of the airport. And then, we made a trade with Guffins in oh seven, you were there, Fran, and we traded the front land over by State Road One for the land behind my house, so that the airport owns that, so they got a fair shot all the way to Thirty-seventh Street, except for where I live, and there's some houses, uh, on east of me that own up to the airport ground. So, I actually just about bought it at the airport. They, Guffins would come back almost to me.
And if they do decide to do this, how are people gonna get to that trail? Are they gonna go all the way down?
They would go up that railroad grade, yeah.
They would go all the way down to Thirty-second and then start walking up?
Yes.
You think so?
Well, I don't know that, I don't know that.
I, I, you don't think they'll be cutting through our yards?
They've been cutting through mine right now, they just go out through mine, oh, you up there?
I know.
My wife says, look, there's somebody going up there, and they throw Walmart bags in my yard and...
Well, let Walmart do something.
Well, and, 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 you know, we're pushing that issue, but the city shouldn't have to pay for a sidewalk for Walmart. The city should not have to pay for that. Walmart should pay for their own sidewalk, and if I'd have been half smart, I would have made Walmart put the sidewalk in, but it wasn't a part of the zoning ordinance at the time. Since then, we have asked the zoning board to consider that, and I think someone in here certainly did. You passed it, did you not?
We have a actual vote on it next week.
Okay. Once they pass that, anybody else wants to put a store up there, we'll have to have a sidewalk before they can put a store. But we should have done that. We, we checked it, we made them pay to put the water under the tracks, the sewer, we made them put water plugs, whoever dreamed, people would walk up and down the highway. Nobody ever dreamed that, I mean, but it's a regular thing now.
Well, I never dreamed when we built, when we bought Craftig, when we were at, we weren't in the city.
Now you are.
And now we're in the city. We thought we were in the country. So, there's a lot to think about here.
Well, I like the cornfield behind me, and there is a bunch...
And I like the cornfield back there, too.
There's a buffer zone behind my house, when they, when they zone that business, there's a forty-foot, I think, buffer zone that runs all on the back of the houses, where you can't put parking lot, it, there's a buffer zone. You were on the council at the time, so were you. Now, I forget whether it's forty or eighty foot, but there is a buffer zone where it has to be just grass. They can't, they can't make a parking lot right up to your house.
Well, I just wanted to stress my, what I thought about this.
Yeah, we appreciate, we, this is what we got, we want everybody's opinion.
Because, um, we have enough walking in our front yard. We don't have any walks, we don't have anything up there. We're kinda forgotten up there, so...
Well, we've tried to do so... Well, we've tried to do some up there. I, I've tried to do some blacktopping. We've tried to do some stuff up there. You had a big hole just north of you. We had a terrible water problem. We fixed it. And, uh, we've tried. We, we get two-hundred thousand dollars for blacktops. We did that. Tavison was terrible. That street was awful. It was falling apart. We tried to fix it. And, uh, I think Nancy's turned in a street up there to, to be blacktopped this year, didn't she?
And more than one.
I know Nancy's worked hard for us.
Our problem is, we got to do a little bit in every district. I got a whole bunch of streets tonight from other councilmen. Two-hundred thousand don't move far, you know.
Well, we've lived here fifty years. We haven't saw anything yet going on up there.
Well, we did put some gravel in front of those houses.
Did you really?
Yeah.
Now, if the city owns that, and you find out they do, are you going to take care of that behind us? You said the city may own the railroad?
Honey, I don't have anything to say about it. It's this council that will make the decision. I just do the meeting. I have no vote.
I mean, there was a piece in the paper where there's a lot of junk and all, disbrush and all this. It didn't get over there overnight. It's been accumulating for years.
Well, I did send them up there.
If the railroad stopped twenty years ago. Well, the railroad did take care of it a little bit.
How does that stuff get up there?
I have no idea.
You said, didn't you say there's a building built up there?
There's a little, um, thing made out of some type of a tarp at, at the end of it, down just, um, south of your house. And I'm not sure the kids, I don't know where, where that came from, or, that's a mess right there when you first.
Those are some kids in Office Park who built them a little tent. They don't have anywhere else to go.
Right, but.
And they had built them a tent and, uh, there.
We just wasn't sure what all went on there.
Yeah.
At the time, right there.
Well, another thing, if you get that one up there, who's going to take care of it? Is the policeman going to be coming through there and making sure that, uh, things like that isn't happening there? Somebody right now has a tarp across there, have a little shelter there?
Well, at this point, not. It's just in a talking stage.
Okay.
Uh, when we found out how serious the Walmart issue was with people walking along the highway, before someone gets killed up there, we thought we ought to look at the issue. And the county council, we looked at the issue as soon as Walmart opened, and it was a problem. Then, we kind of let it lay, because we didn't have enough right-of-way. So, then the county council come back and said, "Well, wait a minute. We demanded a thirty-foot right-of-way on Walmart for utilities. If we demand a thirty-foot right-of-way, which we have the right to do, the rest of the way down the highway, we would have room for a sidewalk. But I couldn't go put a sidewalk on your property. It'd be illegal. And we can't go put a sidewalk up there for Walmart with taxpayers' money. You wouldn't want to pay for that."
No.
So, what we tried to do, we called Walmart together, we called all the people that have a stake in it, the people that own that property. We had a meeting, and we said to them, you know, "How can we figure out how to put a sidewalk up there?" And then somebody brought up the idea, "Well, let's put a trail up there." I think it was the man from Walmart first, and then Mr. Burgess came in last time and talked about the trail, because he lives up there. But it was the Walmart guy that said that first. Clevinger talked about the trail going up that way. But it's, it's not a done deal. Nobody's doing it. I mean.
Oh, I know it's not a done deal.
No.
I just think you should know how we feel.
If this council, if this council decides they want the board of works, which that's what I operate, to put that trail up, they're going to have to appropriate money for it, 'cause we have no money to put that up there.
No, because you don't have money to clean it up up there. You mow, you don't do anything.
Yeah. Gene, I want to end the rest from speak before we go back to Douglas speak. Who's next? Anybody else want to speak tonight?
Thank you.
Thank you. You want to speak, come, just give your name and address.
Thanks. George Conway, it's thirty-three Twenty-Seven Wayne Avenue. We have, uh, an in-ground swimming pool. The yard is fenced in. We have, uh, two boxer dogs, shadow box fencing, and we don't want people walking up and down through there.
Your back end goes up to the railroad grade, too.
Yeah. And we was actually told that we own on the other side of the fence. I don't know how far down into, 'cause it's like sloped down, and then the river is here. And, you know, we enjoy our pool all of the summer out there. We throw Fourth of July parties, Memorial Day parties, cookouts and stuff. And we don't want to have people walking up and down there, you know, peeking in over the fence, disturbing our dogs, making them bark, uh, worrying about the neighbor's property, coming up through his yard, going back there, trash thrown over the fence. Uh, what is, what would be the material? Concrete or asphalt? How you going to get trucks back in there to do all this work? It ain't that wide back here.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you.
This is your time to speak. Tell this council what you want. They work for you. Anybody else?
Mayor?
Yes.
Could we have a show of hands for those who are against doing this?
That's fair. We do that occasionally. Let's do it this way. How many of you do not want that trail up the railroad grade? Now, wait it. Keep your hands up, so we can count. Keep them up. If you're against it, somebody count, will you?
I'd do it the other way.
I will, I will.
All but one, I believe.
Okay. How many want the trail up the railroad grade?
Thanks, Leonard.
Well.
It's not a popularity contest. You guys have a job to do. You don't want to do anything, don't you?
Nancy is the council lady from District Five. She asked for a show of hands, who's favor and who's against. I think she has a right to know who's for and who's against it, since she represents that district. Am I doing wrong to let her know how her people feel? All of you live in her district, evidently. I'm, I'm, I'm here to try to do what's right for the people, and she has a right to know how her people feel.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can we have, can we have, uh?
Huh?
Can we have, uh, Mike and David tell us what?
Yeah, Mike and David walked up there. Come on up here and tell us what you found. Well, you walked up there, didn't you?
I mean, there ain't much to be studied to find out what Gene, what answer those questions.
Yeah, it's an airport issue.
We can talk about all we want.
You could still put a trail back there, even if it doesn't cut across. If that's, if that's, so, let's hear what you got.
It's like some of the folks said, well, they, they do mow and take care of parcels of it, but the overall length of it is still pretty much grown up and.
How long, how far up there is it? Do you measure it?
It is right at a mile. I just did it off the vehicle. I drove it clear to the, to the, to the, the razor railroad bridge and go back. It's right at a mile.
About two-thousand feet of it is pretty much cleared out. The cornfield, that's all that cornfield. It's used, being used now as quads, horse track, I mean, horse trail. So, about two-thousand feet of it is pretty much cleared. And, uh, about twelve-hundred feet of it is behind the housing, housing additions. And there's a lot of debris, thot years, trash, small trees, this and that.
How wide is it back here?
About eight, eight, nine foot.
That railroad is about, most of them are like eight feet wide is what a normal railroad track is.
Did have to be cleared out some, but it's a nice path.
And some of it was cleared out years ago. There's, there's a lot of stumps and things that just need to be, you know, just part of it. Nothing, no, any, no surprises.
Mike, if, if a trail went, what I call the old railroad track, if the trail, you know, went, started, I'm just saying, started Thirty-second Street, and you're going north, where would it end?
Without cutting across?
Yeah.
It, it'd probably end at the creek.
Yeah.
Pardon me?
At the creek.
Lick Creek.
Lick Creek.
At Lick Creek?
Yeah.
But, i- i- if, I agree with what Mike.
The old bridge is gone.
I'm sorry?
The old bridge is.
Yeah, I, that trestle, I'm going to be clear on that for roughs. But, with Mike, what Mike said, with what Mr. Worley said, um, you know, I, I think a trail would be great, but, but when you're talking about airport right-of-ways, you know, I, that's not a good thing. That's not a good thing. I, I don't, I don't know what, if we start a trail and it goes to nowhere, we can't do that.
Well, before all this, I suggested that, uh, you're right, we can't apply for grants at a trail going nowhere. But, that trail could go to Park Road sidewalk or to the park as a connection area to extend it that way. And I'm really not a big fan of making a trail to Walmart. I always more make a, a nature trail. It just so happens to go out that way. Um, and the park would be the connection point. And that's how you get grants to, uh, the state. You have to, it has to go somewhere, not to Walmart. You won't get any grants calling a trail to Walmart.
Right, that's right.
They'll just laugh at you.
Right.
How much difference is it, these people having a trail behind their homes, and some of us living in town have an alley run behind our houses? Where's the difference?
Well, here, this, the alley behind our houses have been there forever, so to speak.
Yeah.
This is something that'd be brand new, something to be put there that wasn't there before, is the difference.
That's the only difference.
If you put a trail north to Lick Creek, people would probably cross it to go to Walmart. They would get into airport property, I would say.
And it's a pretty good hike from, from the trail to Walmart. It's some, something, I'll just take my bicycle up Road One. Excuse me, but that's what I do. I wouldn't, this is just.
And I said that two weeks ago tonight. You could put a trail from there to Walmart. You still have just many people going up and down State Road One.
Yeah.
Because who's going to come all the way over here, come all the way up there?
This, this is out, this is out of my way to, to go to Walmart if I go to Walmart.
They cut right through my yard, right across the cornfield Walmart.
The trail part is, 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 is really a nice idea. Something Mike and I had talked about briefly was a, a trail up Western Avenue of the railroad there, the old canal, to keep, to go up to there. And, you know, many, many cities have a bridge that they go, a walkway that goes over the road and into the shopping area. That's, that's something else to think about just for Walmart.
You don't want it takes to put a bridge over a state highway?
Well, I might, but I see, but I've seen them though.
I can't let her play.
No matter what we do, it's a lot of money, though. That's the problem.
Okay, we, we're not going to spend all night on this, because.
Well, let me make a point better than David and Mike. Traditionally, when railroad right-of-way is abandoned, the, the property of the easement reverts to adjoining landowners. That, that's almost universal. And, uh, probably in this case, that's very likely what happened.
So, the airport owns half of it and the property owns half of it?
Well, these folks that have lived along it, on the one side, but on one half, and then on the other side.
The airport owns it.
The airport, I suppose. If the airport in fact owns that land, then I guess.
Yeah, they do. They own that.
Did you have title to the property or a clear zone?
Question on that, John.
Just let me ask, do you have title to the property, legal title?
I said, no.
You do not?
We have title right up to that property, but there's a, there's a description that shows that we do have half of it.
Well, it makes sense, the half of the right-of-way.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, uh, so what's happened is, when they abandoned the railroad, one half of the right-of-way reverted to the airport apparently, and one half would have reverted to the.
Well, it originally reverted to the Heim farm, and then when the airport bought the Heim farm, they, they bought that.
Well.
Now, now, the other exception is, on some occasions, uh, and it's been determined, the railroad actually bought and owned the right-of-way, uh, as opposed to it being granted as an easement. They owned the land. And when they owned the land itself, and it runs along a railroad and it's abandoned, they still own the land. But in this particular case, no one's researches, no one knows.
And, and I think that's the thing you need to do. If you're going to continue this, you need to get Govin to tell you who owns that. And I talked to him. He said he could tell us that. He would research it. But if these people all live up there and they don't want it up there, I can't picture this council putting it up there.
There's an extremely good possibility they own one half of the right-of-way anyway. Anyone that lives along it.
So legally, can you put a lien on the property that you maintain to own the half on the property owners? Do they legally do that now?
I, I think the title reverts to you. I think you own it anyway.
So, there's nothing legally they'd have to do to get the half of the land, the lien on that they maintain the next amount of years?
It's by operation of law. When an easement is abandoned, it reverts to adjoining landowner.
Yes, sir.
We're going to turn on the law. We're, we're not going to spend any more time. We spent twenty minutes listening to the people that live up there. Nancy, you want to put a trail through your district?
I want to do what the people want me to do. The majority of the people. Now, so far this evening, it is the majority, and they don't want it, as I.
So, are you a favor of pursuing it, or you want to stop it here?
I'm concerned about what, uh, has been said about what Gene Worley said. But I, I was already told that the people who live along there own that after railroad went out. That it reverted to them. And I don't know, I haven't seen any legal on it, but that's what I've been told.
Well, one half of it was, okay, one half to each side, you know, of the right-of-way.
Tom, do you want to pursue this?
I, I'll tell you what, Mayor. Um, I was really, I mean, I, I think we need a walking trail or riding trail someplace, okay? Uh, but having said that, after what Mr. Baker said about more than likely the property owners up there probably own half of it anyway, and especially what Mr. Worley said, even though I'm, I, I would love to see a trail up there, I, I would say no.
If the city doesn't own it, there's nothing to even consider.
Do you want to pursue it? Do you want to go further?
I don't think we have enough information at this point in time. Do I think it's still a decent idea? I don't know. We'll see. Uh, I do think that it's probably in the city's best interest to, uh, find out who owns it and to find, find out any legal issues that may cross the airport. So, I think that we ought to look at this and find all the facts out before we make any kind of decision.
Fran?
The people going through your yard, they're on airport property, aren't they?
Well, Guffins now, because most of my back end backs up to Guffins. There's just a short end. About where I am from there over belongs to the airport. I, on the, on the red lights there, they almost look right in my family room.
Now, Mayor, can I clear something up? I'm confused. Gene, is that an airport clear zone, or does the airport actually own title to the real estate?
We own title to the real estate, and it is a clear zone.
So, it's both?
We own that, we own that property.
Yeah, so you, you bought that from the landowners that owned it before the farm and so on?
We paid cash. We paid money for that.
And down to what street?
The back of the mayor's house.
Thirty-seventh Street?
Thirty-seventh.
So, so the, the, the farmland there is owned by the airport?
It is. We ran it out, John. We.
And it's run out to farmers?
Yes, sir.
Is that compatible with airport use?
Yes, sir. That's permitted under the FAA grants.
Yeah, all right. Well, I know it's been done for you.
One more thing, Mr. Baker, regardless of what the legal ramifications are, I think I can say without question that the airport board is going to deny this. We're going to vote against it if it comes to a vote on our side of it. We want to release that property to be crossed. We're going to say no. So.
If it's owned by the airport, you certainly have a right.
Gene, does it concern you? People are walking on there. Shouldn't you put no trespassing signs up?
We do. We, we have tried that. It's a waste of, it's a waste of taxpayers' money.
Gene, we're not going to start this again. Sit down. Sit down, sit down. It's over. I'm not going to waste the whole evening on something we don't know anything about. We don't know, sit down. We don't know anything about it. And, uh, all these people don't want it. I'm not going to, unless you want it.
Yeah, I want it. No, no, I'm fine. No, it's okay. Connie?
Well, um, I think first and foremost, uh, we need to decide who owns it. Um, so I think we need to gather some more information. Unfortunately, um, we do, as taxpayers, we all pay for so many things that we don't get any good out of. And so, I think it's unfortunate that Conroeville can't have something nice. Whether or not it's a walking trail to Walmart, I don't know, but I, I just think it would be something nice. Um, and as far as the, the legal issues, um, I've been getting, I've had several phone calls today, probably because it was in the paper today, um, everyone was for it. Uh, got a couple emails, and as far as, I think they said that there was trash, so, I mean, that's an issue as far as getting it cleaned up, whether or not there's people walking there or not. I personally think that maybe if it was developed into a trail, it may be cleaner than what it is now. I don't know.
Let's do this. Mr.? Bob, I want you to work with the surveyor. See, Mr. Baker and you and the surveyor. See if you can figure out who owns the railroad grade. It'll be good for these people to know who owns it and who doesn't own it. It'll be good for us to know it, and then we'll talk about it again. But right now, we don't know anything. So, why sit here and waste time about it? And, you know, we're going, we can be here all night and never cite anything, because we don't know who owns the railroad grade, and I, I don't want to spend more time on it. Do you folks?
No.
We don't know. We don't know enough.
I don't, I have a question for Mr. Worley, though, and I don't know if it'll look tangible or not. Mr. Worley, maybe I'll answer this. I'm, I'm still kind of new, so help me out here. Um, it was my understanding that your funds have to be ran through the city to get grants and such for the airport?
Yes.
We have what's called an airport fund. We run our grants directly through the FAA. And we have what's called an airport. called an airport fund where we pay our share out of that. What we get from the city, from the council is our annual operating budget.
Okay. And then when you say the airport owns the title, is that something that the airport owns or is that something that has to be held by the city as well?
It's the city because we work for the city. However, that land cannot be sold or transferred unless the airport board approves it because of the federal grants. And we're called the signer, the airport board. I signed, I signed one for Julie today, a grant. The council doesn't sign it. Airport board signs it. So it's in our name. But we work for the mayor. If he doesn't like what we're doing, if you don't like it, you can get rid of us.
Okay. I was just kind of confused there because-
No, sir. We do that. It doesn't come to the council. You don't see those grants.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I, I don't think there's any point in wasting a lot of time on this because we don't know who owns the grade. We don't know anything about it. We'll pursue that ownership of the grade and we'll find that out. Okay. And Mr. Bodamly's our parks superintendent. He takes care of stuff like that. He and Mr. Baker can work with Jerry Gobin who already knows we want to know who owns it. Once we find out, it seems like it's simple. We, we'll know where to go. If the property owner on this half owns half and this half, we got nothing in it. And if this railroad still owns it, I don't know. But you willing to work on that, John?
Sure.
Sure.
Well, yeah.
Moving on. Is there any other whole business? Misslanious business, Nancy?
Mr. Mayor? Um, I brought to your attention deplorable property at 1204 Flint Drive. Was John having opportunity looking at you?
Yes, it's taken care of.
Okay.
I'll tell you what, the chief, where are you? Come on in here. Tell him. Flint Drive's cleaned up, right?
Mark.
Flint Drive's cleaned up.
Flint Drive has been cleaned up, yes. I'm gonna keep an eye on it. It's dumpsters out of there, a lot of trash out of the yard, a few things, but he, I got his full number and I can get back with him anytime. He said he'd be out there to take care of it. I'm gonna keep an eye on it. That's when the grass season starts.
They appreciate it. Thank you.
We took care of it.
The property I turned in on those time, have you seen that yet?
Uh, yes. I was up there and that, that property is up for, um, it's up for a tax sale.
Commissioner?
I went to a tax sale. It's up for commissioner's sale. Also, also until that time, the neighbor next door asked if he could mow the yard and keep it up and keep the trash out of it. I had no problem with it and he just thinks it makes his property look better. So I gave him permission. I didn't have a problem with it. I don't think anybody else would either. So he would like to try to buy it. So I think that's what he's gonna try to do. We did, we did go up and a gutter was hanging off of it and swinging around. We had some weather here last week and, and John went up and took the gutter off and, and just, just for a safety issue. So-
I want you to make a list of those properties and just pass it out to the council so they'll know which ones we're working on.
Sure.
Thank you.
Make a complete list because-
We have, we have wrote a list. And then the other thing I'd ask, I don't know if I've had time yet, has the bicentennial committee presented you with a-
They have. And for some reason, Melissa didn't put it in here. And I, I'll tell you, it's a birthday today and I let her go home by him for our first meeting because she wanted to have a party with her family. It should have been put in this file.
Okay, thank you.
So if it's all right with you, I will mail it to you.
That's fine.
Okay, I'll mail it to all the council. It should have been in here or not, but we had a great report and the board of workers had it today, financial and otherwise.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
I will mail it to all you council people. Where was I? Do you have anything else to add?
Dave? Good. You good? Good.
Graham?
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I have a little something. This last weekend was the Big Ten Swimming Championships and Daniel Conore from Connersville, who swims on the IU team, actually broke the IU school records, which is, I think, unbelievable when you think of Mark Spitz and all those people. But he actually broke the IU record and a bunch of records he broke that day and I'm really proud of him. You know, Connersville.
Is he a student at IU?
He is. He's senior at IU.
Why don't you try to get him up here where we can own him?
I can do that.
Okay. And maybe we can get him on a TV show.
Okay. Thank you.
Connie, you got anything else?
Nope.
Mr. Baker? No, sir. Um, I got a couple things. There's some good things I could talk about, but if you're not. On the 21st of March, the state of Indiana, first in the senate and later in the house that same day, will pass a resolution stating our bicentennial, making it all legal. The governor, I hope, will sign it that same day. That's part of this whole thing to go through to celebrate. And Mike, we want as many of your bicentennial committees that you can. I need the number. I really would like to see the entire city council in the senate chamber that day. I know some of you, it's difficult. We can carpool. It's very important. This is once in a lifetime that this will happen. They'll pass this or, this resolution on behalf of Connersville, Indiana. I was there when they did Brookfolds and it's, it's very impressive. I'm going to ask the board of works to give Tom permission to take the day and spend up there and he can use part-time people. I think that's the only employee for the city. I can't do anything about your job.
March, March, March the 21st? I think it's gonna be spring break.
No, spring break starts at 23. You want me to strong-arm the superintendent?
No, that's no matter. That's no matter.
I could do it. Really, we need to be there. I talked to the board of works. The city council needs to be there and I'd like to see a good showing from Connersville. But it's once in a lifetime that this will happen. That'll go through the state, both the house and senate that day.
It's a nice three hundred industry.
Yes, it starts at, I believe, what I say?
1:30?
1:30, we have to be there. So keep that in mind. It's important. And I want to tell the Lions Club that the, excuse me, I want to tell the council that the Lions Club voted last Monday at their board meeting, they're gonna furnish the kitchen in the 4H building.
Hey, hey.
Wonderful.
Uh, we had two votes on it and I think Mike's ready to accept a vote on it and we're ready to move on that. We've got the hardboard laid in the kitchen and the building trades class, I call it, has got all of the windows trimmed. And our next meeting, unless something really goes wrong, will be in the 4H building. John, will you be able to beam the signal here? No problem. Okay. We're gonna have both the, the board of works and the city council meeting in the 4H building so you can see firsthand what's been done. Two weeks out. March 18th, just before spring break. Thank you all for coming tonight and I want you to feel comfortable to come down here and state your opinion. We want to listen to everybody. You know, that's what we're here for, is to listen to everybody and try to do what's right for the city. And when you come down here, this is how we find out how you feel. And whether it's right or wrong, when I ask people to raise hands, I think it gives me an idea and it gives this council an idea of how people feel about things. So thank you all for coming. Mike, did you have anything about bicentennial? Anybody else out there want to speak about anything? Ruby, you've been supplied for three months. I don't know. Are you all right?
Oh, just two minutes. Yeah, I have nothing to say.
Oh, okay.
I say Kmart at Walmart or similar, that'll be all. You know, they want me to go up there because they're-
With that, with that, I would take a motion to-
Say it.
All in favor?